Is that my signal?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. How many have moved our play? I love it. Thank you. All right. Welcome to our July 18th, 2023 city council meeting. Kim, please call the roll. After we arrange a little bit for each. Okay, Councilor Beasley. I see your tone.
Thank you.
Councilor Beddingfield is excused. Sorry. Councilor King?
Here.
Councilor Reck?
Mayor Short?
Here.
Councilor Slaver?
Here.
And Councilor Watson is excused. Thank you. Are there any changes and additions to the agenda this evening?
I do, I would like to add one thing that I don't, I think in the past you guys have wrongly motioned and approved whether or not you want to put the ag
Oh.
on the postcard thing.
Okay.
So, because the deadline's soon, because it's coming on August 4th. So, I would like to maybe add that later before at the end of the new business.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other changes and additions? Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda. We just had the accounts payable this evening. Is there a motion to accept the council payables as presented?
How much is the motion to accept as presented?
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and accepted, moved and seconded to accept our council payable. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I did have some questions on that. I could. On invoice 184, Sequoia Consulting is our grant writing service. And they charge us like $75. I'm asking, I'd like to ask what's going on with the grant writing service. I, the last I heard, they were looking for grants that we could qualify for, given our financial situation. And I also noticed, I noticed that McFitner, Getner, and Diaz bill was forty, almost $4,200 in legal fees. And I saw that Isler CPA was listed in here for $10,000. And I'm hoping that our city recorder will give us a report on that $10,000 fee and what we've gotten for our money on that. We've made progress.
Okay.
I was, and finally, I was heartened to see the Depot Bay Food Pantry for $10,000 donation going out. And for, and I had a question on this Seco Inc., invoice number 0880630 Harbor Fuel. It was in the amount of $14,112. And I'm kind of new to this, but I wanted to ask if, if we're making a profit on our fuel that allows us to establish a maintenance fund for future costs in the harbor. So those, those were the things that I had noticed.
Anything else?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Would you like me to start?
No, no, no. I'm fine. I'm just gonna go try to go in order here. So Sequoia Consulting, that $75 was simply for them to help us with the work that they did to try to send the moratorium and actually go through. They're working on grants. We've sent them some information and they're sourcing now. They've been on the road a lot with holidays and vacations. So I didn't get my meet with them yet, but we are meeting on Monday. So I'll definitely get a nice update from you for August. But they're working on it. We just need, we just need to connect. Attorney services, we had a lot of attorney issues in land use and in contacting him about various different things going on within the city that I actually needed attorney advice for. So it's gone up. It's more than we have been, but it's not out of the realm of what we needed based on the things going on within the city. Let's see, you asked about... Isler? Well, I don't have any good news for you, Councilor. They were here last week for three days. He told me that the reason this is additional charge was because of all the work that they've had to do recently to try to get us to a non-disclaimer and also reaching out to our previous CPA and addressing issues related to the information that he provided for the audit, which was not accurate. And it actually was not correct. So it made things more challenging and that's why he is here. He appeared through Friday. He's supposed to get ahold of me, I'm hoping tomorrow, to let me know what the next step is. And where he's at with that, because he was gonna continue work on it while he was over the weekend. So not great news on that. As far as the fuel's concerned, we can resource that information for you, but we don't have an immediate answer.
Yes, we make a profit on it.
Absolutely. He didn't ask if we just made a profit. He just asked if we were gonna be able to set up some kind of maintenance fee. And I don't think our maintenance, I don't... Would you say that in best case, because I don't think we have that.
Well, I was, thank you, Mayor. I was interested in finding out if we are making a so-called profit on our fuel. I don't, I don't think that we can call anything in that harbor a profit. It's such a money-losing item. But if we're making more than we are paying for the fuel, are we doing that?
Yes, we are. We're gonna calculate it and since down how much it's supposed to be. We went through all of this two years ago with the former CPA. And we do charge extra for the fuel. We'll get that information to you. If you could in the future, call the recorder on these items, other than having just a few or your counsel, because these are all things that we can go over before council meetings.
Especially if there's something that I might have to research.
Exactly.
I would really appreciate it. Because the one-off questions like this is fine. It's just the ones where we might have to research that. I would appreciate it. For the opportunity you can do that.
Is there any discussion, further discussion on council payable? All right.
Thank you.
Hi. Any other hopes? All right. Mr. Ryan, do you want to come on up here and give us your presentation this evening? We have Oregon West Council of Governments this evening, and thank you for this report. This is very interesting, and I really enjoy getting these reports. This is fabulous.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So, Councilors, thank you so much for having me again. For the record, my name is Ryan Vogt. I'm the Executive Director for Logan's Castiges West Council of Governments. And yes, we did provide a new annual report this year. As a reminder, last year was the first year in our existence that I'm aware of that we put together annual reports to try and talk a little bit about the footprint that we have in individual member communities. And the commitment I made to you last year was that I would do it again this year, but that I would also try to break it out by a member agency. So you found in your packet, there's a supplemental that gives you a little bit more information, not just what we're doing in Lincoln County, but what we're actually doing in Depot Bay.
Yes.
Now, when you look at it, what you see is there's some landscape. There is room for there to be a little bit more information. Now, part of that is we are continuing to have some struggles with identifying by zip rather by address, a number of listening units that we're serving. And part of that is from the call that I'm here for tonight. And that is, in the course of doing this business, it puts a beautiful spotlight on the fact that there are maybe people throughout the community that are eligible for a number of our services, but aren't accessing. And so my ask for you tonight is that we are putting together a lot more marketing material. A number of our services, our entitlement services, if people meet the financial eligibility or the age threshold or whatever it is, they are eligible for the service. It's not competitive. It's not, we only have so much money and the first 10 people who will probably get it. And so we are starting to put together a series of marketing materials that other cities have said they're willing to post at their city hall or they're willing to stuff in their utility flyers or what have you. So if it's okay with you, I'm gonna, we kind of loop, kind of re-invent that and make sure that we have materials for you.
That's wonderful. Yeah. We would love to participate. Making information available for our folks is always very, very helpful.
Excellent. And I'm not gonna really cover the details enough that most people have specific questions.
Okay.
But I have just a couple of bullet points outside of that that are newer that I'd like to bring up.
Sure.
Can I ask one question?
Well, let's not even finish first. Go ahead.
I always thought you was asking questions.
Oh.
I mean, either way, I have a couple more things that I'd like to cover.
Sure.
So one is we're finishing up the broadband feasibility study. That was something, Councilor, you mentioned, Sequoia. A few moments ago, we've been working in concert with them. We took over some of that work from Sequoia a number of months ago. The first phase of the feasibility study is completing. And on Thursday, July 20th, will be a series of remote meetings where we're gonna talk specifically about those maps. If any of you are interested in attending that online meeting, let me know and I will get you the link. Like, the online maps are gonna talk about the underserved, the underserved or non-served population in Lincoln County as an expression of where the next phase of broadband is going to go. As we try and capitalize on our limited understanding of the state. Also wanted to remind you that, well, not necessarily remind you, well, maybe remind you. We are in the process of finishing up our intergovernmental agreement for IT services. Thank you for your support around that issue. I am hopeful that Jason, Jacob, and the team are gonna be able to come out and help modernize your IT services in a way that satisfies you. And then two things that I want you to know. I'm expanding our land use planning. We currently have one land use planner that we rent out. Rent out sounds awful. But we, we allow member agencies to use at a fee. Because, as you know, lots of member agencies, including yourself, don't necessarily have the capacity to always fund the full-time position for a lot of things that you do. But the other thing I'm really excited to let you know is that I decided I'm gonna bring on three, at least three, grant writers, grant administrators, specifically dedicated to the smaller member agencies. So, Councilor, I apologize. You're giving a very unflattering view, but you were talking about your work for Sequoia. This is not a competitive conversation. This is a supplemental conversation. And I don't know what the quality of our grant writers is going to be right out of the gates. But my plan is to bring grant writers on that can do grant prospecting, can also assist with grant writing, and that we'll be able to assist with grant administration when we land grants. And that grant administration is really the vehicle for me paying for those services. So the plan I have right now is we're gonna bring grant writers on. And if cities wish to engage in that service, I'm gonna split the costs. So we'll take the fully loaded cost, we'll split it in half, and whatever work they did for you was half my cost, and then as grant administration council. And we have some new money coming from legislature that's gonna support that. My thought is in the next year or two, they should be able to get up to speed and have enough business to self-fund. And then we have this kind of evergreen service that we're looking for. That's, that's the vehicle. So they're on the streets. We're trying to hire them now. And as soon as they come on board, we'll start talking about how we did it.
Oh. Partner here?
Oh, Mayor.
Sure. One of the support things they do is like create home and create the narratives based on like, say, if we're in, I have projects somewhere, you just don't have time to create the narratives. But we know what we want to do and we're late, but that'd be part of the services.
Yeah, create the narrative. So if you'd asked me this two weeks ago, instead two is what I was going for in the last minute, I changed it to three because now I'm thinking maybe one per county. I'm even open the conversation about housing back in the thirties. If there are cities that say, we really would like to create a new group. But my hope would be that I would have people dedicated to learning the communities because that's the painful part of grant.
Exactly.
We don't know the community. We don't know the background behind why we're chasing this particular opportunity. I'm also hoping that I can get somebody who's experienced in the infrastructures of beginning to bundle projects throughout communities. There's, there's 19 communities in the red gym that also have water issues, whether it's freshwater issues, wastewater issues, piping issues, what have you. And maybe we can start bundling some of those projects in a way that the economic development administration says, this is now a big enough project, serving enough communities, serving enough people, that it's enticing enough. That's a big check for me to write. I'm just telling you that's the direction I'm going, and I hope we're gonna be able to provide that service. And as we get closer to that, okay.
True.
It's pretty long. Councilor?
Yes.
I'm done. I'm bumping up against my seven month time.
So I think this would fit in. So the $86,045 for rural capacity fund?
Yes.
You've seen to assist communities throughout the region with identifying project and grant opportunities?
Yes.
So that was from last year.
So last year, we have three months left. Anne Whittington is our person, and she has a couple of hours left. So you have some, well, I mean, she specifically told me today, Major Depot Bay knows if they want some grant prospecting work, she's available to come out and talk. And that's free to you.
Yes, please reserve a time request.
Absolutely. The price is right.
I can reach out for it.
You, you know, I didn't.
I do, I know.
How do you, how do you fund these requests?
Well, right now, I'm, you know, I've got it out there wherever I possibly can. Luckily, the Oregon State University is obviously in our backyard, and they have a number of people that they pointed in that direction, they put programs around accessing that information. We're also very closely aligned with Community Services Consortium, and they just love it grants as well. And so I think the people are out there who have experience. It's more about, does the right skill set? So that's part of the reason why I don't think we'll get cost reduction to everybody is I want somebody who's been invested in the region and the community for the long haul, and I'm okay with a little bit of training. I mean, it's something you're not, you're maybe not getting or right now. So I think anything's a little bit better than I think.
Yeah, just one more. Related to specific information for Depot Bay. A lot of people in Glendale and Beach consumers that's Depot Bay are using the 97341 zip code. Or how are you identifying Depot Bay?
Well, right now, I'm having a problematic time with identifying seniors and people with disabilities. The other consumers that are identified on your sheet are based on address.
Not best.
Address, not necessarily zip.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Did you have any questions, Councilor Beasley?
I would like to thank Cog for coming in. And my only comment was that I, I would love to see a kiosk at City Hall with this information, these marketing materials, and to link our website to the Cog website for people who are looking for these kinds of services. And I'm heartened by your grant administrator information. So thank you for...
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor. If there's a, if there's a place for us to put flyers, we'll be happy to do it.
Absolutely. At one point, we kept flyers. I don't know if we still do. But you gave us that so much.
We'll get you some.
We don't have a lot of real estate up front, but it's something that we can... Plus the website.
Plus.
Now that the post office has sort of cleaned up their areas, you could ask those things we posted. People will actually see them. Won't get lost.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Look forward to next year's report.
Exactly. If you all are okay, I'm gonna go ahead and add.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. Appreciate it.
Of course, anytime.
We just asked many reports last year. Does anybody have a community report? I suppose New Year for Houselessness.
Yes, come on up.
Why name?
I might have skipped a few people, but...
I was gonna say. Okay.
Not a minimum commission, but I missed...
Come on.
Last week, I was on the way to the airport, and I was on Zoom and couldn't, like, couldn't sit through the half-hour crap hot discussion that had to bail. So I did not get a chance to submit my, or talk to you. So all that to say, I, there's nothing to report anyway, because we haven't had a meeting. Our meeting was rescheduled from earlier, from July 4th, I think, to this Thursday. So we'll be tackling some of the equality of life ordinances, and there's a few other agenda items that would get recreated. So new, or probably something more interesting next one.
So thank you.
You need to sign in here.
Not bad, please. Emergency care agreements, is there anything down to that?
No.
Harbor restoration? I don't think we have anything there. Costless committee?
Yes, come on up.
I'd like to just give a shout out to Mayor Short for managing this process and seeing that it's addressed, very important topic, homelessness. And to Kim for all the hard work she's done rummaging through this vast amount of ordinance that's, that's there, picking out the things that have to do with homelessness, and then creating home exceptions that are relevant to this issue. So I think it's proceeding very well. You know, apologies for the nitpicking. But that's, that's the bad news. The good news is nitpicking. Because there, a number of us have really kind of words meant just about every inch of this thing. And I think it's coming along very well. So we're having something to propose, I think, after our next meeting perhaps to the council. And I think it's making very good progress. I'm very encouraged.
I am also, yes. Yeah, you've got excellent input. And it's not nitpicking. It's making sense of all of this.
That's right.
It's all benefits.
It's very complicated.
It is. It is. It's a tough issue. Appreciate your being on the committee. You're wonderful.
So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward. All right. Anything on parks? And salmon and him? No. Any public comments this evening? This will be on items not on the agenda. No public comments? Okay. We can finish this. Okay, we've got some ordinances to go over this evening. And let's see. First reading of ordinance number 240-23, Chapter 92, Harbor Regulations. And so I'd like to, has everyone had a chance to review all of this and look at Kim's comments as well?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Short?
Yes.
My concern, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. I, I'm concerned about the vast amount of material. Personally, I have been unable to read everything. I skimmed over it. I pulled out areas that I have questions on. But honestly, I haven't had a chance to really review this ordinance. And there, and I think that we have got to go over it painstakingly, as was pointed out by our very adept harbor commissioner. And we need more time to look at this. Personally, I'd like another chance before the next meeting to read it completely. Maybe we can pass the first reading tonight, but definitely hold this in abeyance until we've all had a chance. I don't know if everybody else has had a chance to, to, to read it. But it raises questions for me.
I had a chance to read it.
I thought it was helpful that you had the changes weren't read.
Yes.
So that makes sense to me, is what we're doing. We're trying to change.
There's been a lot of work on this. And the harbor commission and Kim have got to be commended to put themselves together. This is an emergency situation right now?
I can explain that. So if you don't want to...
Please.
Okay. So one of the things, and it's kind of a, it's a twosome at least, where we have the harbor commission, the harbor regulations itself, and then the harbor commission, which is not an emergency, and then the mortgage rates, which isn't necessarily hard to see. We are behind in building the mortgage rates. And in order for us to do that sooner rather than later, we wanted to get with the opportunity of having item number one passed as an emergency. Now, the only requirement for that, and I spoke with our city attorney about it, is that if all the council has to agree to reading, doing the first reading by title alone, and agreeing that it's okay to pass by emergency, otherwise we have to wait a week or we wait to the next meeting. The only reason we wanted to do it as emergency, because when we do the mortgage license agreement, that is gonna come with a renewed mortgage rates. Some of the things that are going to be in there would have been informed from the new harbor regulations. So we essentially can't pass the mortgage rates without passing the regulations. So if we, if the council wishes, we can delay the whole thing. But I would want us to delay item one and item three because they kind of go in hand in hand.
Yes, I, I did agree, for the most part. What was really helpful, though, was saying through the meetings of the harbor commission and seeing the labor that they've put into this over the last years, months, forever, a long time. I mean, they dissected it. They went over it. Went over it again. So I applaud the harbor commission for doing such a thorough job. One type of H27, type of D, it says D website, should be city website. I thought that was very clever, getting website. So other than that, I'd make a motion to do it by title only if that's what happens next. And that's what happens?
Yes.
Oh, you want to send it to me? Okay. Is there any suggestion?
Yes. It was sent out pretty last minute. And I have a number of, not that many, but some substantive comments on it. And, and also, I think the mortgage fees need to be looked at more, and I know we're behind getting out the billings. But I think we need to look at them with with a pretty critical eye. Because all it is is an 80% cost of living or inflation index. But we're not even compatible with other areas. So what I would suggest is, and I could go over the suggestions I have. They're on about six pages. I mean, six different pages I've commented on. The other thing we could do is just to authorize people to send out, I mean, the city staff to send out billings at a status quo for two months. And, and including to the annual mortgages, which then could be refunded after they, we pass the, the ordinance. But that would buy us more time. It'll get billings out for two months while we take a more critical look at the ordinance. And I'm pleased to go over the changes I have, if you want to hear them. Or I could send them out in a track changes note, if you want to put that on top of what was suggested. But that would be my suggestion, because you know, Councilor Beasley hasn't had a chance to read them. I don't know about Lindsay and Autumn. But this is really important. It's important to people who have mortgages. It's important to the charter people, and I think we need to get it right. So that's my suggestion. If we're gonna do the reading by title alone, I would like to then to, before we do, suggest, I don't know when that happens, but I would like to go through some of my post edits. I would say not do the read by title alone, because according to our rules, if you make substantial changes between this one and the next one, yeah, basically, I have to talk over again.
The owners' collection?
Okay. So I would rather, you know, meet with anybody who wants to make changes and position it. But my question, I have a couple of questions. With your changes, do you intend to go back to the harbor commission and talk to them about what you suggested? But my question, I have a couple of questions with your changes. Do you intend to go back to the harbor commission and talk to them about your suggested changes?
No, I think, you know, they recommend the changes, they have done an incredible amount of work. But now I think it's our obligation to take it from there.
Okay.
Okay, second, just to clarify and
I mean, that's me, I don't know how, but that's what I And Carla, who does the billing, and I don't know that much about it, let me, I want to make sure, Carla, I hope you're listening. I want to make sure you do this right. So one of the questions was, you helped, Council Rec, when you said it is to be based on the current rates, ba- based on the status quo, right?
With the, right, the cost of living.
She mentioned to me today that is it going to be based on the current rates at the annual or the monthly or the daily? Because annual is cheaper than the monthly. So if we do it by whatever the monthly is, you're saying to use whatever their annual rates would be and just charge off that.
I was just thinking, charge, just so it's easy, one rate that would apply to everybody, would just be the monthly, the daily or something else, but the monthly rates. And then I think then when we, you know, when we figure it out, then we prorate it to the annual. Okay, I think that would be easy enough, but I I mean, I don't really care about trying to get the billings go out quickly and for the two months while buy some time to go over it.
Certainly. May I, if she's available, if I have her speak and explain that? Carla, can you explain that situation, what you told me about what rates to actually bill so we can be consistent?
Yeah, so that second spreadsheet that city staff sent out to council where we literally broke it out what the annual mortgage rate is per month versus what the monthly rate is. So if you were to look at your proposed annual rate, now that's including the eight percent increase plus that additional two hundred dollars. Your annual per rate month is ninety four dollars and seven cents for twenty five foot and under. If you compare that to what we charged someone who comes in on transient mortgage monthly for that same size of boat, we are proposing three hundred and twelve dollars per month. So you can see there's a significant amount of difference between your annual rate. If you were to break that out by month versus what we charge someone using transient mortgage.
So we can just be looking for direction coming council, which bucket, basically?
Oh, yes, Council Easely.
Mayor Short, I I'm with Council Rec on this. I think we should delay this, give us time to look at it. I mean, there were materials that came in today that I haven't had a chance to look at that I'm very interested in. I'm, and you know, it strikes me that this is just what happens to us when we are, we seem to be constantly running late. It was the same thing during the budget where we're up against these deadlines and we have to absolutely get stuff done. And I think we need to step back and be very deliberate about things like this. I I hope I'm in there so that you can hear me. But I'm I'm with Rec that we should wait on this a little, at least until the next meeting and peruse these materials.
Not meaning it's not until August eighth.
Yeah.
But we could do a work session, we could do a work session. But to answer Carla's question, can I ask for another one?
Absolutely, thank you.
Carla, is it, doesn't it make any difference to you which way we bill in terms of ease, just to get all the bills out sooner than later, like tomorrow? Or next day?
I think honestly, for the the mortgage holders, it would just be cleaner to wait till we actually create the what the mortgage rate is going to be. I think if we get into collecting a portion, I think it would, I think it would be more confusing than if we send out one bill that is what the established rate is. I mean, we're already, you know, a month into the mortgage season now. I think getting into the pro rate, I think it will cause more confusion than if we just let folks know, like we have been, that this is still being discussed now at the council level and that the billings will go out with, you know, cover letters explaining some of these changes, not only to the bills and regulations, but also to, you know, the the license agreement and then, of course, the rates included.
So it would be, the rate would be calculated as of July first, in any case?
Correct, correct. They would get, for the full mortgage season, it's just that they, I mean, I don't anticipate anybody at this point until they get. Now, let's say someone gets that annual mortgage and they decide to, you know, relinquish, then then we could get into a situation there. But otherwise, it would be, you know, full mortgage.
Okay, so then I think, I think if we hold a work session, we might be able to make a decision at our next meeting. So or, you know, soon after, or maybe two work sessions, whatever it takes. Uh, whatever it takes.
We moved it.
Oh, I made.
We moved it. Do you want August?
Well, the next work session, the next council meeting is not till August.
August.
Should we schedule a next work session next week on the twenty fifth to keep this going? I'm not, you can.
You're not, I'm not.
Oh, that's right, I'll be soon time.
I'm in.
How about the first?
August first is never mind.
Thirty first, Monday or Wednesday?
Thirty first on Monday.
Thirty first.
Wednesday, I'll be, we'll be fine for national.
So thirty first, the first, Monday?
No, the second. Monday might be challenging with national.
How about on Wednesday, the second?
Friday, Tuesday.
I prefer not Friday night, you know, we can do that, it's too hard.
We could do Thursday to
Twenty seventh?
I'm not available.
Go, okay. You want us to get August?
Yeah.
So the first is national, like, so can you need to be covered on the second?
Yes.
I say, August second?
Yeah.
August, August second?
Yes.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, August second?
At time? Six P M?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you like us to invite the harbor commission to attend?
Yes.
We'll join. So we're just going to table then items one, two, three, and four, or one, two, and three on the agenda. Until August.
Well, the the harbor commission is different, but if you got a table all three of them at that time.
Well, they need to go through. They need to go through it all.
The harbor commission, only a few changes remain that.
Oh, oh, okay.
But I think, I think, Commissioner, I actually think it's time.
Not aware of.
The harbor commission makes certain conditions to the council, the city council acts.
Right.
And if we have questions after review changes, I think it'd be good to ask the harbor commission. But I think it's up to us now to kind of make the hard choices.
Right, so if we wait until we have this meeting on the first, that council meets on the eighth, the harbor commission isn't meeting till the end of August. So you wouldn't have a chance to ask them questions or
I'm I'm thinking we're good. It's pretty straightforward. They did their work. They did a very thorough job. So I don't think, other than the mortgage rates, there's not going to be controversy.
Okay. So what do we want to do?
Have a work session on the second.
Okay. And we're going to hold this on items one through the eight. Let me check that. We'll just do it all at once.
Okay, that's fine. And also, for me and Scott, if you have any need more information or need clarifications or actual due reviews, please don't hesitate to let me know and we can provide that rather than waiting till the day of.
If you have to.
Could you send yours in?
Yes.
So review what your comments were to Kim.
Yeah. That way we're all prepared. Okay, so we table those. Okay. It's been brought to our attention that the League of Order cities is having their annual training session in October. That's going to be in U G. And I think Council New and Autumn went last year. And it's really a huge, huge benefit to go to these. And so if you're interested, please let her know because she can sign you up. And there's so much information that comes out of these seminars that is really, really helpful. And it's a good networking opportunity to get with other cities and that type of thing. So I would really encourage anyone that's interested in attending the League of Order cities seminar, please do. And while that registration should be filled out, the hotel rooms are. For example, the conference hotel is not available. So, I mean, it was long the day of opening, so I tried. And we do have a training budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all covered. And it's, it would be really helpful to anyone that's interested.
Mayor Short, may I add a caveat to that, that whoever thinks about going, consider this. For years, we have sent people, representatives to these meetings. But we seldom really heard much back about the meetings, other than they were good, they were useful. Sometimes a brief discussion of topics. I have seen the reports filed by the Newport City Council members that attend these meetings. And that would include the city manager, finance director, the the city counselors. Everybody who goes to this meeting files a report on and it's not something that should take a lot of time, but lets us know about progress in certain areas.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Yes, and Kim?
Council Easely, last year, I attended and been in conference and I did a lot of work and I'd be happy to send that to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Council. Good job.
Yeah, it was excellent. Twenty four in Yonkers, big gallery. Um, last time we talked about the Sanne Bay and that the chamber leaders noticed that they didn't, they were reluctant to do it. They had a discussion and that since then, there's been a lot of community input and I just wanted to bring it back. And turn it over to you, but Okay, okay. Well, we can open up the floor for public comment then. Is there any public comment on the Sanne Bay?
It looks like they're coming in.
Sure, please, come on up and state your name.
Nice.
Please, please.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be in here. I want to sign out.
Sure, that's fine.
It's a pleasure to be here and to talk to each of you.
Okay, can you state your name?
My name is Jake DeBo.
Yes.
So for a lot of reasons, it's really nice to be in here and to speak to all the policy people here, Council members. I just wanted to speak to the cultural value of the Sanne Bay as a community gathering. We all know the past value of it historically and as a candidate of this community. But looking forward into the future, as for questions raised in the last council meeting, is the community even interested in this in the future? Which I think were valid questions and also support your decision, I think, for responsibility for putting this event on. The community is interested and there's a lot of, a lot of their past experience running in Sanne Bay who have approached me and would very much like to be involved. But there's issues pertaining to questions surrounding the event, the planning that are just being unanswered. But I don't want to get into that, but some of the needs, I think I would just like to state that, yes, we do like this event. It is a value to us as a community, as president of Deepo Bay. And I hope that this council makes decisions to support the community members who are, I do believe we have a big coalition of people, we possibly together, concerned with community members who would be willing to volunteer and organize and keep this thing going forward. With that said, I guess I'm signing in.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any questions for Stacey? So you didn't come, this is kind of ask an off question.
Sure.
Sorry, it's off topic, but you didn't come to our fiftieth celebration where the rest of your larger family was?
No, I had time on it. I am a fully disabled person, but with chronic pain conditions.
Oh, sorry.
My ability to get out is limited to when my pain says, you're going to go.
So we have a picture, though, of the family members that showed up around the sign. We could perhaps make a copy available.
Sure, absolutely, you know what I'm having to do.
Yeah, and I really appreciate all of that and the plaque down there especially. It's really nice to have a parent in history. We love our history, not only just the deep down, but us members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
My name is Laura Miles and I am a resident of Deepo Bay. I have had either one or both feet in this community since I was eight years old in nineteen fifty eight. Well, actually, probably around nineteen fifty six was when I started actually camping behind the old schoolhouse here while my dad went fishing. And recently, I keep feeling one of my most beloved people, then my wife, Bob Jackson, who served as mayor more than one time. I believe he was also in the Chamber of Commerce and he worked passionately in this community and in particular toward the Sanne Bay. So I have felt him kind of nipping at my heels since last race and it's time, it's time. So for me, the Sanne Bay is a big part of the charm of this community. It is one of our two big events that everyone knows Deepo Bay for. And it would literally break my heart to see the Sanne Bay dissolve at this point. And like Jake, I think that there's been enough of an interest shown over these last few days since the information came out about the Chamber of Commerce, that I I don't think we would have a problem at all with the right direction, the right leadership to pull this back into the truly the level of community that it used to be when, when everybody from young and old was out there serving fish and, you know, greeting our guests and celebrating the fact that we made it through another year and the tourists had paid our way. And it was just a glorious event and my opinion has changed a lot over the last several years. And I would love to see it be refocused back to culture, community, and our local history. I think those are the most important parts and I think that I I truly feel like we can do this. I I think that we do have the interest. It's certainly not going to happen too much from now. I think the the city council is very wise to make the decision that there just wasn't time if the chamber couldn't go forward. But if we start working now, and like I said, if we form a steering committee and start giving a real sense of direction, maybe even one of my ideas would be to perhaps even go so far as to create a five oh one C three that has a cultural and historical component to it with the Sanne Bay being our big event of the five oh one C three. And again, I just think it can be done and I guess I'm here to officially say that I I do not want to leave this project, but I'm more than willing to not just talk the talk, but to walk the walk. And I will take, it's going to be hard work, but it could be fun and passionate work if we get the right people together. I think you're here. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you. The lady we have signed in, and that time to speak, I, I'm sure this new ski, I live at the plum one five northeast Rain Street here in Deepo Bay. Moved here forty years ago. My mom fell in love with this town, and my dad knew that if he didn't move here, he wouldn't get to do the Saman Bake or the lake. That was really important to me. And so I came here today as a concerned citizen after listening to the meeting last week that started at three one point four two on the audio. It's really concerning. And I stand with a lot of people in the community, some of which are Deepo Bay Chamber members that have decided that we would like to do what Loretta said. I'm standing here with Jake and Melissa and a lot of other people. There's seventeen people that are collected so far to be on the volunteer list for the Deepo Bay Saman Bake for twenty twenty-four. They are also individuals that don't believe that we can volunteer for the Deepo Bay Chamber of Commerce at this time. So anyway, I just wanted to state that. I would also like to know if the city would be willing to let these concerned citizens put on a gathering September sixteenth at the city park to get to know each other and kind of have a picnic and collaborate about what it will take to throw next year's Saman Bake. So just appreciate you listening, and I thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Valerie. Any others? Should I go first?
Okay. Hi, Melissa. Sorry I wasn't here the last time, I was actually traveling. Had I been here, I would have helped a little bit. But I'm gonna start with.
You want to state your name?
Yep, sorry, Melissa Sander.
Thank you.
This post was actually made, it's been flagged and taken down, but I'll just read it to you guys, it's our official statement. "We, the Deepo Bay Chamber, want to clear any confusion concerning the Saman Bake event. The Chamber in no way, shape, or form is putting the fate of the Saman Bake in the city council's hands. The discussion began with the city that maybe if there was a city event, we would be able to get more volunteers and make it more community focused. I can't think of a better way to promote the city of Deepo Bay than with its traditional events like the Saman Bake and the crabbing. The Chamber has spent many hours planning this year's Saman Bake. We have already secured essentials like our tents, the car permit, bathrooms, trash, bread donations, beverages, and many other logistical items. Salmon prices are still being negotiated, because we all know salmon is going to be quite scarce this year, and what the price is going to be is going to likely be very high. Our big struggle is what everybody's facing all around the world, the volunteers. So when we were approached to have a discussion about what's happening at Saman Bake, we collectively said, if we think you guys, you know, will still help, we'll do every piece you could possibly imagine. What we thought of it was transition to being a, quote, "city" event, that we might get the bodies to step up, because that's where we're lacking." So in that, there, we can't, obviously, can't do it without volunteers. We're gonna hold our third planning meeting this week. It's the third one we've held. We had a total of five people show up. We hold these planning meetings monthly. They're on Mirabol, they're on our social media, we sit in the community hall, and we stare and we wait. I don't know how else to get people enrolled. So one thing we do want to make clear is the decision regarding the future of the Saman Bake isn't made by the city. And it's not that we don't, it needs to be made by the residents who are interested in keeping those traditions alive. We're not just crediting the valley by any means, but the city, because we couldn't have done without the help and the support. Because everyone on that board, none of us had even ever seen Saman Bake before last year. It was my first time ever seeing salmon, but on a piece of wood that way. And so Thursday at six thirty, we will finally attempt to bring the Saman Bake to life. We will lose deposits, we know that. We've printed ads that have already been published. I know if I were to flip the switch, we'd get hundreds of tickets purchased. That's not the issue, it's that we can't do it on the backs of ten people. It just won't work. So if anybody would like to volunteer, our next meeting is Thursday, six thirty, Fish and Rock Eatery. We'll let you know Friday what's happening at Saman Bake. We are now close up to giving things to the community, involving team by any means, and supporting it.
One question, what happened to your, all your volunteers from last year?
They all get emailed, they all get the newsletter.
They have an email?
It's in the newsletter, it's in every newsletter, every newsletter I send out.
I don't get your newsletters.
I send them to every single one of you. I can show you, it goes to you. I don't know if it goes to your spam, I'm not going to say this, but you're on the email distribution list.
Okay. I, I haven't received anything. Melissa, what was when you sent out?
June. June was not this month.
Oh, I need to focus, I don't think I've seen either. I don't know if it could be hitting our firewall, or it could be coming out, not coming out, something on your end?
Maybe, because it's such an everybody.
But I will, has anybody else gotten one?
Nope, I think I got one, I got one tonight, June, I don't know.
Okay. So.
But I mean, I, I, everything we put in the post office has been torn down, just like they, or what they made some of the changes they did.
Yeah. Yes, just, so more of a comment. I was really disappointed to see the animosity and some of the just the division that's been sort of put up between we, the Chamber, we, the city, and I'm not going to work with the Chamber, and I'm not going to work, you know, we'll get more volunteers here or there, but not if it's the Chamber. It's really disappointing. I know from personal experience, being a target of bad thoughts and bad feelings, and it's not fun. And, you know, we really are a small community, and there are only so many volunteers. And I know the city can't, I mean, we, we don't have the staff to even just, you know, with even Joyce's leadership, which brought us all on, that's twenty, whatever it was in camp, was it fifty? Fifty. And the anniversary celebration was so much work, and it took all of us and battering, rounding it up, and actually having volunteers. You can't do it with a divided community. So I just want to say that, because it's really disappointing, and if we are going to pull it off, we're gonna all pull together, and I don't think anybody wants to lose the Chamber, but I can't support the city doing the work. We have so much to do.
Absolutely.
So anyway, I just wanted to go on record and say that it's, it's pretty, I'm really just sad. I appreciate that. It, it really stinks to get all kinds of, I mean, talking today, the amount of disgusting things that come my way. It stinks, because I am proud of the things that we've brought here, and proud of Ruilwell, and proud of Economic Development Alliance, and I'm proud of those things. I think that our Chamber should probably step away from events so that they happen, and we'll just continue to support our businesses. And it's unfortunate, but like I told Kim, I'm not scared of its picking up trash, I'll still be there to help. We know I am the hugest supporter of our events, and I just think it's been miscommunication, because, you know, I haven't been receiving emails, I don't do Facebook, I don't do any of those social things, and so it breaks my heart that we're not able to come together. And volunteers are treasured, and I've always kept huge lists of all my volunteers, contacted them early in the planning process to see what their availability is, and I have not been contacted, so. Whatever, but anyway, that's okay, neither here nor there. Any other questions for Melissa? Uh, yes, Councilor Beasley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody who came and spoke tonight. But from my standpoint, what I would like to let you know is that we are actually required by the state to, to support ideas that bring tourists to our city. And so our job is to write a check to a responsible organization that puts on things like the Saman Bake, and we're willing to do that. But as a city council, while I agree with everything that was said tonight by Jake and Loretta and Melissa, our, our job, what we, right now, what we are facing as the city council is an overwhelming agenda. We have very important committees on, on emergency planning and homelessness that we have to supervise and stay in touch with and come to, and to meet goals on. We have a budget to prepare, and if anybody among you who followed our last budget would know what a huge job and how difficult that is for us. We have laws to amend, as we did tonight. We have, we are behind on our audits and are thus in violation of state law. We have a Moody's rating that we need to restore, we have revenues that have been cut short, we have huge projects in the wings. And so I think it's, it's just unreasonable to ask this city council to, to do anything more than what it has done in the past, which is to support a, a responsible organization's efforts to bring tourists to our community. And we'll do that. If you can put people together, if the city council can pull it off, or, I'm not the city council, but the Chamber of Commerce, or a new organization or whoever, maybe we should put an RFP out, I don't know. I don't even know who owns the Saman Bake, I'm assuming it's the Chamber of Commerce, but, which means that we have no, no role in it anyway. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for Melissa? Anyone else wanting to speak? Sure. Come on up.
My name is Clay LeBar.
Yes.
Um, sorry, I'm just not in here, not really. I've never actually spoken at one of these before, so I'm not sure of the rules or anything.
It's okay.
So bear with me if I.
We're very strict.
I speak casually.
Come on forward.
Um, you know, I was, last year's Saman Bake, I've never been a member of Chamber of Commerce before. But moving back to town, my mother got so ill last year, I very much wanted to be a part of the community. I love this town, it's a phenomenal place to grow up as a child. It was, I take great pride in being in Deepo Bay. The Saman Bake last year was really our first major hurdle to be born, and it was logistically quite a challenge. I had never tried to be a member of an organized community that did something on that kind of scale. And we learned this week, but all, when all of a sudden, I was deeply proud of what we pulled off last year. You know, I mean, for me, the payout was people coming in and giving me a hug and saying, "I'm so glad that this is going on again after COVID." And I very much agree with, with Jake Poe and Loretta and, sorry, not sure if I pronounced it soon. Sorry. But it does break my heart to think about it not going on yet. That being said, I mean, if, if the responsibility for the events shifts back to the city, I just want you guys to know that every single member of the Chamber would be happy to volunteer. I would, my wife would volunteer, my in-laws are actually here from Osaka right now, they told me they'd volunteer if they could be. So I think that really the problem here is communication between our two organizations. And I would very much like to dispel some antipathy that we have. I'm not even really sure where it comes from. Again, I've, I've only been back in Deepo Bay for about a year and a half. So I don't have privy to kind of the local politics at all, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I just want to see these events happen, they're good for our businesses, they're good for our talent, they're good for our culture. And anything that I can do, anything I can contribute, I just want to put myself out there, I'll happily volunteer, I mean, anything. So, I, I, if I can speak to many members of the board of the Chamber, then we all feel the same way. I mean, I just, I'd really like to see these events maintained. They were a large part of my childhood, I enjoyed them immensely, I still enjoy them. And so I just, Mayor Short, I'd like to personally thank you, because you're always there as a volunteer. Incredible amount of work, and I very much appreciate all the tribute you can.
Thank you. I, I really enjoy it, it's, it's very gratifying.
It is, it is, it's an extremely cool thing to be a part of. Especially, you know, I mean, for somebody like me that's never done it before, it, it fills me with immense pride to be able to see these events hold off, and our, our clients, and our tourists, and our locals be so happy. So, you know, I hope we can make it happen, I really do. I, you know, it's, but logistically, it is a bear to get done. I mean, there's so many moving parts, and, you know, I couldn't be more proud of Melissa, she's amazing at juggling all these things. I could not keep that many, like, stitches, I hate it, so. But, you know, I just want to say that, you know, all of us at the Chamber, you know, we just want to work towards making Deepo Bay, you know, a more thoughtful place, a, a, a more, you know, organized place, and, you know, anything that I can do, just please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Clay? Thank you so much.
Of course.
Any other? Yes, come on up.
Hi, thanks for letting me have a chance to speak on what you're speaking in. And I first just wanted to thank Councilor Rec for bringing up an issue that really hasn't been brought to the attention of a lot of people. And that is the fact that there are certain things and negativity that is being spread in this town that makes events like this next to impossible to pull off. And here's one thing I would say. Last year, we were told by several people that the Chamber was not going to pull off the Saman Bake with the short amount of time that we had. Coming off of COVID, you know, coming back with the first event since COVID, coming off of a brand new board that did not, never been to a Saman Bake room, trying to pull it off, we really relied on volunteers. And when you have negativity being spread in a small community, and really not the opportunity to essentially defend yourself, because you're not going to play that social media game publicly, I mean, that's just like in the spiral, it's never a good idea. It just spreads toxicity and negativity in a small town. And so I really appreciate that you brought up that, because one thing that gives me hope about it is despite the negativity, that happened last year as well. At the end of the day, people showed up, and volunteers showed up. And although not many people showed up at our meetings, volunteers showed up, and they got it done. And you and your group of volunteers that you found at the pole staff of the city, everybody showed up, we worked together, and we got it done. Every event like this is going to really take hurdles and pickups, and you can't make everybody happy. But what I can say is, being a former member of the Chamber, it was extremely difficult to sit on that board, looking at all the negative comments, all the false information. And the negative, toxic information that's going out to people without being able to say anything to defend these good people with businesses that sit on this board as a volunteer, to volunteer their time, especially in busy season. Let's face it, this is all of our busiest season. For us to carve out time in our lives and step away from our businesses to try and, and put on events like this, and, you know, it's, it's extremely difficult. And I just would like to see the negativity stop. Wherever this event goes, it's not going to be successful without this negativity being, you know? So I just wanted to bring that to light, and just stick up for the Chamber of Commerce. Because personally, sitting on it, I've been the victim of slander and attack on social media. And part of the reason why I walked away after a year, because I know, first of all, I don't have time, and what is the reward? You know, like, we want to do good for your community, just to see all this negativity come thrown back at you. And that scares me, because that, the current board is full of great people that are, that have businesses and have been here for a long, long time, and I would hate to see more people walk away, because. And I would hate to see more people walk away because of all those threats that's happening. So I just wanted to say that and just to defend the Chamber because I have, I'm very proud. You know, I had tears when I walked away from the Chamber, not because I, it was more of like, we did work hard. We worked hard. And everybody was proud of the events that we did. And we did pull it off despite all of the negativity that we got from a lot of people. Thanks to the people of Depot Bay, a large majority of them who showed up and volunteered and got it done. So, given the negativity and work together as a team, and we can pull this off. But I just wanted to make that statement because it, I was really disappointed. And it just makes me never want to volunteer for a position like this ever again because it was, it was pretty frankly awful to have to put up with that. So, that's my piece.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, can I say something, please? And I just, I just have to say at this point that I, I'm, I was a big supporter of the Chamber of Commerce last year and its success. And I had hoped that it would move forward with this project, and it, it just hasn't happened. But I would have to say this, that tonight, we've seen that there's been a lack of communication. And moreover, in the old days, in the old Chamber days, there was a lot of transparency. We knew how much money was raised, how much money was spent. In fact, there was a rule that was passed in the Chamber of Commerce to actually give a percentage of the gross to the city for the parks, for parks projects. I don't know if that's going on now. In fact, I don't even know what role the city has in, in, in this anymore because there's no tran, as far as I can tell, there's no transparency. There's nothing coming back the city's way. And this has to be a give and take, especially if we're, we're going to be partners on something. And it's just, it just doesn't appear to be that way. I just, and I am sorry for the, all of this. When I saw what was presented tonight in our packet of all those comments, I thought, this is the reason the city does not want to get involved in this. Is because of all of this negativity that people are spewing on the internet. We need to be as far away from that as we can. So, thank you, Mayor.
Any other folks wanting to come forward? Anybody online? Oh, Bruce. People are unmuted. Do you want to unmute?
Hello. Name is Bruce Trent, and I've been a longtime volunteer of the Chamber and a member of the Board of Directors, including treasurer and before that, the bookkeeper. I now am president and founder of a nonprofit organization known as, or incorporated as Friends of Depot Bay. With our mission to support the city of Depot Bay's citizens and the greater Lincoln County, surrounding areas of Lincoln City, so forth and so on. We are just beginning. We are very interested in supporting the Salmon Bake, but not in the way that the Chamber has been willing to support the Salmon Bake. They've always looked at it as a money-making opportunity for a visitor center that no longer exists and is no longer staffed and no longer serves the city of Depot Bay and/or the businesses there. So our emphasis is, as Commissioner Beasley said, is there used to be a fund, which I have no idea what the balances are anymore, called the Community Fund. So it was really just a savings account and a checking account that did the checking account did the day-to-day activities of the Chamber. The savings account is what we funded various projects, including memorial benches, gazebo contributions, all kinds of things. And those contributions to that community fund were only funded out of the Salmon Bake. And there was actually two. There was the one in the city of Depot Bay, and then there was one that we did in the valley. Excuse me?
I'm sorry, McMinville.
Yes, McMinville, but then it turned out to, to, to go to a winery. And, you know, but it was, it was a separate one. And we gave 20% of all the gross proceeds to the savings account. And so should the Friends of Depot Bay become involved? And I don't know if there's time this year unless it's an extremely abbreviated Salmon Bake, say 50 pounds of salmon, which is like 100 people for meals or tastes. But going forward, it would be, our, our vision would be not to bring tourists to town because it seems to be that the streets are always full of people nowadays. And that what is really needed is a celebration within the community of what has happened with us as a people and where we're going forward and that we made it through another year and the captains are all safe and, and, and the boats have landed and all that good kind of stuff. So, anyway, I just wanted to introduce my, and my org, my new organization to the Chamber tonight. And I thank you.
Do you want to address the status of the funds? Oh, Grant. Mr. Grant, are you incorporated as a 501(c)(3)? Bruce Trent. Was it Bruce Trent?
Yes. I am, I am a 501(c)(3) organization. I have a document that I meant to send to Kim to include in the public comments for the EIN and so forth and so on. But yes.
Thank you. What's your question? Are those funds still available?
The Chamber still has funds, absolutely.
I mean, the Friends of Depot
There wasn't a Friends of, it was a, they put a, they put a separate fund away for it.
Oh.
And a lot of it was used for Salmon Bake last year. The proceeds, like, it, it's a due percentage were put away for the next one.
So the Friends of Depot Bay, just as a, as a reminder, was something that was on the bottom of all of Bill Score's personal checks. And, and I approached him and said, that's a great name. Can I take that and make that a nonprofit? Of which he was going to be the founding father. And unfortunately, he passed before that occurred.
May I ask you to clarify a question? Yeah. What is the city's view of the purpose of the Salmon Bake? Is it to drive tourism or is it to be an event for locals in the community? And tourists don't matter? Because my question is, as a Chamber of Commerce, our focus and purpose should be to drive tourism, to enhance commerce in this community. And so if the city's view of this event is that it shouldn't be to drive tourism, then we shouldn't have anything to do with it. And, I mean, I'll still volunteer, of course, but, you know, my goal when I joined the Board of the Chamber of Commerce was to increase commerce. My family has five stores here in town. I rely on tourism. They pay every single bill that I pay. And so, I mean, I just don't understand. So, so is it a community-oriented event that is just like a fish fry at the end of the fishing year and everybody celebrates as a town and serves our welcome? Or is it an event to bring people into our community and establish commerce and increase trade within our businesses?
Well, I believe it was, as a Chamber, an event to bring people in and to make money because before our county stepped up and sends $30,000 a year to, we had an office and that type of thing. We needed those funds to, to go. If we want to make it smaller and make it a community-wide event, I, I don't know. That's something we need to decide as a community.
Of course. Well, that, this is my question because it seems like both of our groups have a very different view of what the, the focus and purpose of these events are. I mean, in my opinion, I always thought these events would bring people to town to, you know, kind of spread some tourist dollars across businesses, restaurants, hotels, the whole nine yards.
Right.
Because tourism is the backbone of our economy here.
Right.
But, you know, if, if we want to shift it into a, a kind of an old-timey community event, I mean, that's fine with me also to volunteer, but then I don't think the Chamber of Commerce should have any role in it whatsoever. I mean, policy's in our name. All we should be focusing on is our board. Should be increasing revenue for our, our Chamber members and local businesses.
Absolutely. Councilor Beasley, Councilor Beasley. Pardon? Councilor Beasley. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Beasley?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to weigh in on this briefly. We're required, again, we are required to spend our TRT revenue in a 70-30 split, 70% to support tourism. So, to the Friends of Depot Bay, I would say this. If your intent is to just make this a, a local event for the city, I would think that would preclude the, the city's involvement. I'm sure this is debatable, but we need to bring tourists into the town. That's how we make our money, is by putting heads in beds. And, and, and by law, we are required to use that 70% of our TRT funds to bring tourists in, to do things that promote tourism. And I'm totally for that. There's too much anti-tourist attitude in Lincoln County right now. We need to be pro-tourists, get back into that mode. Thank you.
Yes, Bruce. All right.
Get myself un, get myself unmuted here. I am, I, if, if the, the purpose and the intent of the Salmon Bake is to bring in tourists, which it always has been, and, and grab tourist money, then it is certainly a Chamber's thing. But I'm hearing that the Chamber doesn't want the damn thing. And that something else needed to be done in order, if it needed to survive the community and the heritage of the Salmon Bake. And all I'm suggesting is that perhaps that is not as large of an event and not as well-publicized event, but that it continues to build on the history of Depot Bay, the 75-plus years of the Salmon Bake from the seawall to, you know, you, you all read Jake Depot's letter. I mean, it could, with 50 fish, if you could give us the seawall, we could do it down there again. I mean, it's, it's, what is the purpose? And if it is to bring in tourists, then it's got to be a Chamber event. That's it. Then they got to step up and do it.
Make money.
I'm done.
Oh, well, I do agree that, well, my involvement in the Salmon Bake is, is an event that brings people to our community from around the globe. That, I've gotten to meet people from all over the world when I've been down there serving fish. Because one of the things we do is PR, and I go up and we show people the salmon size. We let them take pictures with them, they tell us where they're from. It's, it's amazing the amount of people that have traveled from around the world to come here. And, well, and it brings in people from the valley. We used to bring in buses, like bus after bus after bus, all day long, of people from the valley that live in, in elderly communities. And they use it as a field trip to come. And so, like, it takes a lot of coordination to run all of that. But, I mean, I watched my mom be a volunteer coordinator for that throughout my whole entire life. And so that's why I started collecting a list of people in our community that still really want to be a part of that type of a Salmon Bake. And I do appreciate Jake's ideas, bringing in cultural aspects and like collaborating with the Celeste Tribe. I mean, we quit writing letters to them and asking them to be a part of the event so that they could show us dancing and different things and telling us stories. I think it would be amazing to add those pieces in. And, but I just, I know that there's a lot of people in our community who are too afraid to speak up. And, yeah, so I've become this chatty box person saying, you know, feel free to speak your public opinion, your, your personal freedom of speech. I mean, people are being made to feel scared to speak up against an organization that many of us have been a part of for a very long time. I wanted to join when I first came back to Depot Bay, and I asked to see the bylaws, and I wasn't even asked, allowed to see the bylaws. And if you're going to want money from me to be a part of your group, I, I need to be able to read your bylaws. I don't know what I'm even buying into. It's just a gross false statement.
It's okay.
Yes, sorry. Okay, thank you.
This is a little common, though?
Yes. Yes, Loretta.
I would like to say I did volunteer at last year's Salmon Bake. And so to address some of the things that Shulei has said, many of those things did happen. There were busloads of people who came in from the valley, from retirement homes and assisted living centers and whatnot. So that was a lot of, of the ticket holders came via that way. There were also cultural aspects with the native community, although I don't believe that any of them were from the, the local Celeste Tribes. They were from outside of that. So I just wanted to make that point. But the other thing, the Clay asking, is this a money-making event or is this a community event? It used to be both. And that's what I think it should be. So, yes, it was a way to bring the tourists in, but we weren't bringing them in just to sell them salmon and to make some money and to get them to buy trinkets at the gift shops and make spend night. We were unfolding them into our lovely little community that had a glorious heart on parade. We really were. And that's what I want to see happen again. I, yes, we need to bring in tourists. We need to bring in tourists year-round, and this is one of our big events. And that's why it would be such an enormous loss to the community. But the other thing is those of us who were here years ago know what kind of community. Truly, truly tight, beloved community. We were brothers and sisters. We were mothers and fathers. We were all related. We shared DNA that came from under that bridge. And being able to invite outsider guests to our event and share that spirit with them is where I think we need to go.
It seems to me, so, excuse me, I'm hearing that last year was very successful. And that's what I'm seeing. And I'm not sure what happened between last year and this year. Because this year, we don't have volunteers. You're not moving forward with it. And it's sort of like, what, how was the ball swung? What, what was the difference between this success of last year and a non-event this year?
And we're actually not saying it's not an event. We have done all the labor, but I don't have this feeling, which was the same issue I was in last year. We didn't even know. I wrote in my family, I mean, her family, everybody's family came in, my best friend from you guys. I mean, we were probably all recognized from Salmon Bake and craft. My best friend from Portland drives up here and I made it. And then people just showed up, and it was amazing to see that. We had no idea. People just walked in, oh, I always volunteer. And they went to work. That is, that was exciting. That's our only goldback. We, we have no problem with anything else to be done. It's that we aren't, I think, we don't have the people. And I don't know if I need to do a mailer, I'll do another. I don't know what it is that, that we're missing. I don't know where that is.
Well, I could think that several months ago, you probably would have felt that you're not getting volunteers. And why not make phone calls? You know, why, no, all, none of us were contacted by phone. You know, she could have certainly put something in the mail. But I would think that that's the, the lack of, trying to get volunteers is the key issue. I don't know what all you did to do, you have to be successful.
Sure, I probably could have made more phone calls. That's absolutely out on that for sure. I mean, we went straight from crafty to move into, you know, finding it's Salmon Bake. It just, I want to see more logistics. Absolutely.
Yes, Mayor.
Um, so just a couple of things that I was touched on by Shulei. Um, so last year, I personally reached out to Celeste's community. I actually, I know a couple of people there. I know the mayor. His son's basketball coach for several years.
His son's basketball coach for several years. And I reached out to him, I said, hey, um, what's been, because this is my first year on board, what's the, you know, what's the Selecs community's involvement with this salmon bake? Like, are you guys, because I heard that the dancers that we got came from elsewhere, and they weren't even our local tribe. So, I called them, and they're like, we haven't been approached to do anything with this salmon bake for years. I don't even remember the last time we've been approached. I thought that was, quite frankly, kind of appalling and sad. So, I reached out to them. Not a whole lot of dancers left, but we did get the drum circle to come, the same one that does the, all the major ceremonies at the casino and all the basketball games. I've seen them a hundred times, they're amazing. And so, we did reach out to bring that aspect back in as much as we could. So, on, on another note, you know, we have, you've said you've collected a list of seventeen volunteers, but you've also attached the negative comments about the chamber. Like, I've collected seventeen volunteers, but they won't volunteer for the chamber. Well, if this event is about community and tourism, bringing everybody together, why are we attaching any negative notions to this at all? Why are we saying we're only going to volunteer, but not if the chamber's involved? First of all, you're painting a really ugly picture of the chamber. And secondly, how is that going to bring the community together? You know, so that's where it's hard for the chamber to, you know, get volunteers when we're battling this negative stuff that's being posted all over social media. And so, it would be great if all of that negativity could just stop and for the interest of this event, in this community, in Depot Bay as a whole. You know, we talk about, you know, how we love our town and love our community. Well, let's get rid of the negative and come and work together. You guys have great history and knowledge, and we would love to have, but you refuse to work with the chamber. And that's publicly been announced. It's, it's been said many times. I will do it, but I can't support the chamber. Well, you're pretty much setting up the chamber to not be able to be successful with your negativity. That's my opinion on it. So, I would just love to see that go away, and let's all work together and make something like this happen. You know, because we can do it. I, you know, I, I felt the, the event was pretty successful last year. But if, if, if we really thought it wasn't successful, we came together as a community and we got it done, coming off the two years of COVID. And people had fun, for the most part, that game, we had very good feedback. And, um, I just don't see how the chamber can be successful with this. We don't have the support. And if certain people are unwilling to work with the chamber, and then it, how, how, how is that going to help anybody get anything done?
I'm working on training, and I would just like to speak as a former chamber member and as a current community member. What I would have liked to see, and what I would like to see now currently as a community member, is full transparency. I fully support our chamber. I feel like it should still stay in place. I feel like it does wonderful things for our community. I love this event. I think this event also does wonderful things for our community. And I would hate to see it go away, because it is really what makes Depot Bay, Depot Bay. But one of the things that, as a small community, we all respect is, is somebody that is, or an organization that is fully transparent. As a former trans, or member, we asked for that transparency, it was not received. It was not received also because we found out we were not technical members by law. So, we weren't able to continue with those questions until we joined something that we weren't able to get our questions to, and, and it was very confusing at that point, of what was going on. So, again, whatever does happen in the future, full transparency is really all we are asking for. And I think that's important to a small community. And, you know, the negativity, I'm not sure what they're experiencing on our social media very often. But when we start getting grouped with a native organization, then there's a point that we do need to make a stand and let the community know that we are separate from this. And so, that's really our goal, is moving forward, we would love to see that, full transparency.
Thank you. Any questions for Lydia?
Yes, Greg. Thank you. What does that mean to you? Is it about finances? Is it, what is it about? What's transparency to you?
Well, even for, for example, whether that's finances, or whether that's, for example, we were told that there'd be twenty-eight boats, wooden boats, for example, and, and really, we were then told four showed up, but only everybody saw one. So, things like that, it's, it's little things, but then they really add up to bigger things. And so, that's where it comes into, the board is designed to be able to keep each other accountable. And so, when we aren't able to do that, then we lose that full transparency. You want?
Any other questions for the committee?
Just a question of a point of curiosity. Is the chamber a public organization? Aren't they accountable to the citizens of Depot Bay? And do they publish their financials on a quarterly basis or at all? I mean, we're a public to consume. No. We're a nonprofit.
You file, can I have your terms?
Do you publish your financials quarterly for the public to review at all? Nope. No. Is that a possibility?
It has. Yeah?
I think going forward, if there was a, just a quarterly financial publication, it would really help to alleviate a lot of the questions on transparency. There's just a lot of people that are, excuse me, still screaming. There's a lot of people that just have questions surrounding it that aren't even really involved, but that would like to be, but they're just concerned that they're going to be involved in some drama that they wouldn't like to be. And that's kind of in my reservation as well as a volunteer. The last year, I chose not to, because there was concerns brought to me from other members who've been involved in the past. And so, I don't want to have drama in my life, and I certainly don't want to join any or have any issues and other been discussed. But I, I do think that if there was some sort of public transparency and accountability, and say that this chamber is accountable to the citizen, right? And we will publish its financials to show you that these concerns are not necessary, and that going forward, we can work on a same and equitable table to that. But if that's a possibility, if that's not, I don't know. But, and I'm also just curious, what are the avenues of accountability for the citizenry with the chamber? We do know of avenues with the city council, but because the chamber is so involved with our community and our culture, where, what avenues for our answers to be met are made available to us?
Well, I would.
Okay, the point, just a point of city clarification here. It's kind of one person, we're getting back to it. Yeah.
We need, so, we need to get back up. Sorry. One question on the screen. Bruce, did you have a question now?
For us to.
I did. I just wanted to, to indicate again that through all my years of involvement with the chamber, they are a C-four, which is a mutual benefit corporation, nonprofit corporation. But they're there for the, to support their business members and not necessarily the community. A C-three, as such as Friends of Depot Bay, who has stated in their admission statement and was accepted as a C-three, a charitable contribution thing for the benefit of the citizens of Depot Bay is a little bit different. So, my slant, when I talked about something, when I talk about something, it is towards the community and not the businesses. When you're talking to the businesses, you need to talk to the C-four and get that done through them. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. I think there's like a lot of discussion that needs to maybe go on after this meeting in groups. Maybe, I'm not sure if this is the right forum to be having a look back and forth. I think, yes, you know, some other piece of testimony or something that we, my reason to bring it forward, I think, has been accomplished. And that was just to revisit it and give people a chance to weigh in. Okay. Clay, you have a question?
Sorry, I just wanted to make, just a small comment there, in just response to you, sir. Good. So, the, I see the difference between Chamber of Commerce and the Depot Base and the Council is that membership to the Chamber of Commerce is entirely voluntary. We are volunteers. Member, speaking of a review of the city council is not voluntary. You live in the city. Well, but you, you, I mean, you guys run the logistics of the city. We not, we are a business advocacy group. So, as far as, you know, culture events, I'd love to be involved, and I, and I might happily volunteer. As, our main focus is advocacy for local businesses and increasing, increasing profit and revenues. That's it. You do not, we're not required to join the, the, the Chamber of Commerce. You're not required to pay dues. And so, you know, if you don't want to have anything to do with this, you don't really have to. I mean, it's, it's a voluntary organization. And so, I mean, we're accountable to our chamber members and our local businesses. And I think we live up to that promise.
Do you have any make, public meetings for people to, to join?
We try, and nobody ever shows up.
How contact with these things? They're posted.
They're posted online. I actually, I volunteered a spot in front of one of our businesses. We're going to install a kiosk, and we'll have a cabinet on the front that will give, you know, information on every single event the chamber does. And so, hopefully, that'll raise awareness, because people will see it walking up and down the street. I mean, I, we're trying, we really are, and so.
Just a statement, we can look up online through the state of Oregon whether or not the Chamber of Commerce has filed tests.
One last comment, Lydia.
I was just curious, if you are not a chamber member, do you get promoted by the chamber? As a business, or is there a responsibility just to promote all businesses in Depot Bay? Remember something?
I think it's also a good use of the gander thing. I mean, we promote our chamber members, but every single tourist that brings into this town helps everybody evolve. I mean, I wouldn't rule anybody out or disparage their business.
May I? May I just make a comment? First, this is, I think this is, it's been a good conversation that I think y'all need to have again. So, my recommendation is why not get the parties together in a neutral area and have this open, frank dialogue? Because the city council really isn't involved, we don't oversee the chamber, we can't really say, go forth and do the salmon bake. It really needs to come from them, but if you can sit in this kind of group together and have a decent conversation, which you've proven you have and you can, I think, I would recommend you continuing that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to move that the city stand by its July fourteenth news release, but that we encourage good citizens and organizations to get together to solve this problem. And in doing so, would provide the, the community hall for a meeting place for such a group meeting to occur.
Is there a second to the motion? I'm sorry, I'm. What, what did you, what was your motion, please? The latter part about July in the community center?
My motion was for the city to stand by news release of July fourteenth, but to encourage good citizens and organizations of Depot Bay to get together and meet to solve the, the salmon bake, and that, and so much as we can help, to provide a meeting space at the community center.
One second, that. It's been moved and seconded to encourage the two groups to get together, and we would provide the community center for that avenue. Is there another discussion or a motion? All of you, please, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. If you have a time and a place, you can get together and we'll hash it. Thank you for coming forward this evening. Okay, let's move on to the agenda here. Staff of courts, we've got project updates that everyone is working on. Any comments on those?
First off, we, we, you guys, if not much has changed. The only thing that I can give you is I gave you a copy of the capital program for this fiscal year coming. This, we had our first meeting, we did on last Friday. It's Brady, me, Mayor Short, and our new public works supervisor. Immediately, we need to go over these. So, I'll give you a product update, but we're basically just starting for the fiscal year. And with a new project works to, our public works supervisor on board, Brady, he's getting his, he's getting his feet wet, already making some great changes. And Public Works Group is now having Monday morning meetings where they will kind of like quarterback what they're going to do for the week. And we are starting to, they've commandeered my board, although we will work on a, right now, they've commandeered my board to show them the kind of projects that they're doing, and help them stay on focus. So, good, some good stuff so far, don't you think?
Absolutely. It's good communication, and it keeps the guys updated in working on cleaning up the town, trying to get the curb stuff painted through town. And the sidewalks, strippers can be here by Thursday. And we started the parking lot at Vista, on Empire Coffee there. So, installing the storm drain and clearing.
And you've also asked about the harbor shack, har, excuse me, harbor office. That, um, Roy was supposed to send me a picture, because they were going to take their first few out of the new office today. You just want to take me a picture, their first customer doing their first few out of the new office. Um, so, but there hasn't been a lot of real promotion, that's why I didn't include. But I did realize we have to go back.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
That's okay. So, I just need to know if the council would like to advertise again this year? Because you, you, you did some, oh, God, I forgot what you did. You did some kind of. We did a quarter ad. You did a day. So, I just need to know if you want to do that, and if you want to basically put away last year. Last year, so it's really up to you, and I don't know what you, what you did. I just know it was done last year.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
We'll make a motion that we follow what we did next year to support the Coast Guard.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Discussion? Yeah. So, I think we all support the Coast Guard. I don't see this as supporting the Coast Guard. I see us supporting the advertising of the News Times. And I don't think we need to spend our money that way. I know on Friends of Depot Bay, Valo is constantly supporting the Coast Guard and, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I would go along with the rest of the group, but to me, it's, it's really, I mean, do we really need a tribute to the Coast Guard and the News Times to say that we appreciate our Coast Guard? Just big okay. Yeah.
Mayor, short, may I come in?
Yes, please.
I want to say, first of all, that I don't have anything to do with this. I don't work for the News Times. I, I won't have anything to do with this, this project right here. Once again, we are required to advertise. That's part of the deal that we strike with the state in our transient room tax. And I think we should take advantage of anything we can, since we don't have a Chamber of Commerce that we're engaged with that's, you know, bringing tourists in anymore. And this is just an opportunity, I think. Another thing it does is it shows our support for the Coast Guards, but they're going to, they're going to be the ones that are reading this. And I think that we could put together a striking message from the City of Depot Bay. They've done so much for us over the years, and there's not enough that we can do for them. For us to not be in this would be just, people, you know, I just can't imagine that. But I, I appreciate Counselor Rex's point, I do. But we have to spend money on, on advertising. We just literally have to, and find ways to do it. And here's a way to do it. Thank you.
Okay, was there a second to the motion?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Uh, it was moved to go and promote doing a quarter ad again this year. The same, same as last year, I think we.
I think that's way too small, but I, I'd be supportive of anything that would get us in there.
It's been moved to seconded to put in. It's been moved to second to put in an ad for, same as last year.
I was just ready to give this.
It was like four hundred dollars.
The quarter ad? I don't remember. I was going to say, it gives a big increase this year. Um, I don't know if we have code membership, so quarter ad would be two ninety-nine without membership and one ninety-nine if, uh, quarter pay, one ninety-nine if we have a membership. I think we spent the higher grade. I don't think people are that much.
So it'd be two hundred and ninety-nine. All on B for C I?
I.
And opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. I think I have one more thing. Did you, did you guys have to take a look at the national lineup flyer that discussed from on Tuesday? It's also updated with the, I updated the tsunami flyer for the caches that the idea is to start promoting both of those together, which is what the emergency preparedness folks would do. The only thing that's really changed is we're not doing the ducky derby because the tide is supposed to be really low. Uh, so we figure the duckies will get stuck in the dirt. So, uh, we're going to do a dipping for a duck, dip, dip for duck, which is basically we're going to put blindfold and radical with ducks. And we're going to look for these angels and devil ducks. And if you pick an angel duck, you get some kind of prize. And if you pick a devil duck, we have some other kind of prize. So we think it'll be a lot of fun. Um, but, uh, we have another meeting today, August, tomorrow. Um, things are going well and Samaritan's going to be there with their milk and flight helmet program. So that's nice. Um, and we have a few other things that I was still working on. Looking with the mayor feels better. We'll be able to do our walkabout again now that we have a tour.
Yeah. How are, how are you going to stay up this?
Um, I'm actually going to call out the volunteers. I figured that once we got the flyer done, we'll have the fire, coast guard, and, um, sheriff, help, some other people will be volunteering at their, also at their areas. But I'm also going to call out some of the city staff that volunteered to participate and be at their. So I'll be needing some people to, um, just do moves like one of the moves, which is a fishing game. The kids will put something over the fishing game that the guys are putting, and then somebody will come in and we'll hook across.
And then pull on there.
And then pull on so they feel like they're fishing, you know? And then we have tug of war and also we're working on some stuff like that. So I'm going to figure out, Brady and I are going to get together just so we can figure out the, what is the little idea, I don't know how many, um, how many volunteers we need. It's not going to be like a ton of, but definitely not the two hundred salmon bake a year. I'm thinking what we had at the, at the, um.
If you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm a little bit concerned that you asked, uh, city staff to quote volunteer. I think that's sort of inappropriate.
I didn't ask them to volunteer. I told them, I said, you are not required, but if you want to help, you would be welcome to help, just like we did with the fifty.
And they were paid.
The fifty, I think, most of them were paid, but some of them weren't. Here, I told them they won't be paid. It's pure volunteers. Because they've asked me. I didn't ask them. They've asked me.
So what, what constitutes free food?
Oh, hot dogs and hamburgers. That's it. It's not going to fall out for that. It's just our first point is just really kind of test the waters and see what it's like. And if it goes well, and I'm putting the majority, I'm doing with the majority, probably about ninety percent of the work at home. And I'm also funding some of my expenses because I think it's a worthwhile event. Plus, I have this support. But I'm just, I'm going to keep you guys involved, you know, to the extent that, um, knowing what's going on, I know that it's taking place. I think it would be a fun event. I'm looking forward to it. And I'm cooking the hot dogs.
What's, what's?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I got a call from a member of the press today, and I think it's important for everybody to know this. Uh, when is the audio of our meeting posted? And, uh, for my edification, when is the video posted of our, of like of tonight's meeting? When will that appear on our website?
There is no legal requirement to get those posted immediately. I do try to get them up within a, in a few days, which we did with the audio, but I haven't got the video up yet.
That last one, you got audio and video up?
Oh, good. She got both of them up. I didn't, she could. Okay, that's good. Okay, right.
And it was just a couple days after.
We tried to do it a couple days after the meeting, but I can't promise that. A lot of it depends on what we all have going on at the time, but there is no legal requirement to post it. I just try to do it as fast as we can. Yeah, uh, one of our primary website posters just didn't help.
Was it cool?
That she gave it to you.
We don't know that she gave it.
And, and what was the other question? Uh, the audio and video? We had, I didn't.
What was the video?
Yeah, I, I guess both of them went up. It depends on the format because I used YouTube. But it looks like she was able to get both of them up, but I didn't realize that. So I gotta see how she did because I think she, I didn't think she could.
Any other questions for the panel, Brady? No? Um, public comments, any closing comments? Any council comments?
Yes, Brett. So, um, uh, we're in a moderate drought already. Rest of the state is in bad condition. It's, we don't have any rain forecast. And I'm wondering if, um, with this moderate drought, um, what is called for is just public education. And I'm wondering if, um, I know the water bills already went up, but if we can get something posted, just reminding people that there's no rain in the forecast and we really, I mean, this is having tourist time. If we can get something to, uh, Walmart. I think Brady put out, uh, conservation messages last year. We can dig them out and get them sent out to.
What's our status on this, on the drought here?
Oh, well, Rocky Creek's pretty, pretty, yeah, yeah. It's, it's running pretty strong. We're working on that in August, getting the aquifer up, which is probably one of the biggest aquifers in the hand. If we can get that into our, uh, raw water, which currently not yet, but it's going to be amazing, a water source.
But we shouldn't waste water. Water's precious. We're not, you know.
Right.
And, uh.
But we are, I don't want people to think that the city of Depot Bay is in drought because we're not.
We are in a drought. We have water, but, um, it's.
Well, conservation is always good. I mean, absolutely. I totally agree.
So, um, that was one thing. And then, um, I'm wondering, this review of ours, if I was suited to hear the sheriff say there wasn't any major problems last, you know, this, this year. But, um, I'm wondering if our city could, um, write a letter to both the city of Newport, the city of Nicket City, um, saying this is a new normal drought, you know, drought, warm weather that we asked them not to renew contracts to sell, sell the fireworks. And then finally, um, there's the, the, um, parking lot right next to, uh, the horn. I saw somebody park in the entrance way because the arrow isn't right there. They would park for, and I left and came back, that was two hours, but I don't know how long they were there. But if you have the, um, the, uh, people to do the line, that means.
It's coming Thursday.
Yeah, to put one right at the entrance there.
They're going to address that.
Yeah, that would be very, to do that. Thank you.
Tracy, do you have anything?
No.
I was glad to see the vote from the harbor master, um, that he's getting excited about enforcement.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think that's great. And whatever we can do to help him, you know, the docks are basically a mess. And he knows, you know, like just crap, hot count and all that. So kudos to the harbor master. And whatever we need to give him for support to really enforce the rules that are already on the books would be awesome.
Right.
Hello, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes. Is this Autumn?
Hi. Yes, hi. My name is Eva Harmon, and I am one of the owners of Dockside Trotters. And if you guys are taking public comment, I would love to share a word.
I'm sorry, we're closed on that subject for this evening. We're moving on. Justice Beasley, did you have any other comments?
Uh, I just want to thank the recorder, and it looks like Fran Rec is part of this, for, uh, this material they provided on the harbor tonight. I think there's a lot of research in there that's very interesting, and I look forward to this meeting that we're going to have. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I hope to see everybody at the August first meeting or, um, night out, though, anyway. And we are done.
Thank you.
Awesome.